And before we begin, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge. And then Councilman Brian Powell will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we love you. We thank you so much for your rich blessings that you have given us. Thank you for this wonderful city. We just ask you to be with us tonight as we go through these deliberations. May it honor and glorify you. May they be the best decisions for our wonderful citizens of this wonderful city you've given to us. We ask all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Brian. Well, again, good evening. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, September 26, 2023. I also want to give a special welcome to Troop 777, our Boy Scout troop, and they are here working on their citizenship merit badges, correct? So, great to have you all with us tonight also. All that said, I call the meeting to order, and I will ask our, not our city clerk, in lieu of our city clerk, Denise Pierce. We've got Debbie Pounders joining us tonight. Thank you, Debbie, and Debbie will do the roll call.
Mayor Doug Sprows.
Here.
Brian Powell. Amelia Williams. Jeff Watson. Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rex Bailey. Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fuggerus.
Here.
Ernest Cate.
Here.
And me.
And I would like to remind everyone, the council, especially the ones north of me, that you do have a button you can push to speak, and we'll get you on the record that way. Thank you. It's just half of it down there, but anyway. All right. We do have a quorum. This is, we're at item four on the agenda. This is the portion of each agenda that the council sets aside for comments from our residents. If we have any citizens that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, please feel free to come to the podium, state your name and address, and keep your comments brief, because the council won't take action tonight on anything that you bring forward. So, is there anyone in the room that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on. Item five is the approval of minutes. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to look those over. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item six, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, counsel?
I move for A and B. Second.
Got a motion for A and B. Roll call, please, Debbie.
Okay. Which one's this? Powell?
Yes.
Williams, not here. Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Carrier 7-0.
All right, thank you. I'm going to ask James, will you meet me? Oh, oh, it's, I'm sorry, it's Chad. I'm sorry, James. Had the wrong thing. You can come too if you want to, but Chad's going to meet me at the podium, and we've got a couple of, actually, three presentations to make. Hey, Chad. I'm going to let you speak first, and if you want to bring Eric up here, that's fine. Eric?
Eric.
Ask Eric Carr to come join us. As you know, we do, we highlight a department every month and ask our department heads to recommend a, one of their, one of their employees to honor for the great work they do, and Eric Carr's joined us, and I'm going to let, turn this over to Chad for a minute.
Thank you, Mayor. Eric Carr started with us about 18 years ago, and he started as the low maintenance side, and he worked several years there, and then we promoted him to the ballfield maintenance. He was my only ballfield maintenance guy for five or six years until we got a new position open. He went back to maintenance, and he's been at maintenance ever since. So, and then recently, we just promoted him to be our aquatics manager, and he's doing a super job there. It's his first year, and can't say enough good things about him. I do have one story on him. Last year, opening weekend of NFL season, we got a call that someone kicked the ball and hit our sprinklers at the rec center. So, they called me, and they'd already called him, but he's an avid Dallas Cowboy fan, and they were kicking off at 3:00, and I know he did not want to come, but he did, and he got it all, you know, wiped up and everything, and I think he got to see the second half, but I wanted to throw that out there, because he's a Dallas Cowboy fan.
It's a frustrating thing. Thank you, Chad. Eric?
Yeah, we're not done. I've got something to give you. Just want to thank you on behalf of the City of Springdale, the City Council, and the residents of Springdale for all the great work you do, and here's a little token of our appreciation, and I hope you put that to good use and enjoy it. Thank you again.
All right, we got a young lady right here, Addie, Addison Parsons, and y'all are welcome to come, or, but. Adeline. Yes, sorry. Darling, I want you to, y'all, would it be okay she sit on a chair? Is that okay? I want to get you on TV. There you go. How's that? Is that okay? That's good. Okay. All right. Well, this is special. This sweet family came and visited me a few months ago, and just wanted, wanted the city to know of Adeline's plans and her successes and what's before her. So, we're very pleased from the office of the mayor and this city to do a proclamation in support of her and her endeavors. All right? I'm going to go ahead and read this for you, okay? All right. Whereas Adeline, or Addie Parsons, is in the first grade attending Don Tyson School of Innovation Virtual Academy, her favorite subjects are mathematics, science, art, and music. She has been listed on the A and B Honor Roll through kindergarten, and whereas her National American Miss Awards include Runway, First Runner-Up, Top Model, Fourth Runner-Up, Best Resume Winner, Photogenic, Third Runner-Up, Casual Wear, Second Runner-Up, and National American Miss Arkansas Princess Winner, and whereas Adeline starred in the Polar Express Christmas Show at Faith Family Christian Church in Eureka Springs, has played soccer for three years in Springdale, three years of gymnastics, and one year of ballet and tap dance at Academy of Dance, and whereas Addie's favorite activities are swimming and playing with her neighbors, she enjoys singing karaoke and baking and cooking with her mom. She enjoys floating the river and fishing with her dad and Razorback basketball games. Her favorite book is Berenstain's Bee by Jan and Stan Berenstain, and whereas her goals are to gain reading comprehension, to be the best big sister to her baby sister, and to become a veterinarian, to make sure all animals are happy, healthy, and strong. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Doug Sprows, do hereby proclaim September 26, 2023 as Adeline Parsons Day in Springdale, Arkansas, and express how proud we are to have her represent Springdale and the state of Arkansas in the National American Miss Pageant in Orlando, Florida. She truly represents today's girl and tomorrow's leaders. Congratulations, Addie.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to say to the council? All right. All right. Thank you all. Thank you for being here. Sure. Y'all get in here. Oh, boy. Are you giving that to me or? Okay. I didn't want to get missed. Oh, yeah. Okay, I've got one. All right, thank you. And this is yours? All right. And that's, this is a fundraiser to help with the expenses on the trip and the pageant. So, these are $5 if you, it's up to you, but they're yours, but she is selling them, thank you. She is selling them for $5. So. Oh, okay. No, well, we'll, we'll help. Okay? All right. Thank you. Thank you all. All right. That's, that's good. All right, I've got one more proclamation to read. This is a very important month of recognition that, that we do this every year, and so this is a proclamation from the office of the mayor of the City of Springdale. Whereas the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence first started Domestic Violence Awareness Month in 1987, originally a day of unity, and whereas this month aims to educate Americans about what is considered domestic violence, it also reinforces a zero tolerance policy when it comes to abuse. The signs of abuse include: Your partner threatens or tries to control you. Your partner controls your money. Your partner isolates you from your family or friends. Your partner physically abuses you, or your partner threatens your family. Whereas, when raising awareness for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, it is important that we also acknowledge emotional abuse. Just because there are no bruises does not mean there is no abuse. A lot of women and men suffer from emotional abuse, and it is no less destructive. Emotional abuse is often overlooked or minimized, even by those who experience it. And whereas emotional abuse includes verbal abuse such as controlling behavior, intimidation, isolation, shaming, blaming, name-calling, and yelling. Abusers who use psychological or emotional abuse will often make threats of physical violence as well as other repercussions if you do not do what they demand. The scars of emotional abuse are very real. It is important to raise awareness of all types of abuse. And whereas National Domestic Violence Awareness Month encourages those in abusive relationships to get help, the month isn't just about learning, it's about doing. According to a CDC survey, 20 Americans experience intimate partner physical violence every minute. That totals around 10 million victims per year. And whereas National Domestic Violence Awareness Month is designed to unify women and men all across the country who've been victims of domestic violence, it is important to recognize that domestic violence impacts millions of people, and it is not only women who are victims. Many men suffer domestic violence as well. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month encourages those in abusive relationships to get help, and whereas millions of Americans are domestic violence victims, they need our support to move beyond the abuse. And now therefore, in recognition of the importance of educating our citizens about domestic abuse and the need of those who suffer from it, the City of Springdale recognizes the month of October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I call upon the citizens of Springdale, Arkansas, to speak out against domestic violence and support victims and survivors, victim advocates, service providers, healthcare providers, and the legal system, as well as those working to end domestic violence. I know y'all join me in this proclamation, and I thank you for this time.
Hello. My name is Erin. I'm from the Peace at Home Family Shelter, and he stole all my good statistics wherever you just went. But just to make it a little more specific to Arkansas, every year, or in their lifetimes, rather, over 35% of Arkans and men, and over 40% of Arkans and women are affected by intimate partner violence, whether that's intimate partner sexual violence, stalking, anything like that. And unfortunately, in 2020, Arkansas was fourth highest in the amount of homicides between men murdering women in the state of Arkansas, and that's not, not a great place to be. So, as far as what Peace at Home is doing to try to curb some of these numbers, we have a lot of really awesome services. I'll just kind of repeat the, our crisis service line, just to get it out there, because I have a space to say it. It's 479-442-9811, and I have more of that information if anybody needs it. But we have our emergency shelter, we have legal services, we have counseling, we have an awesome outreach program, and then we have something we're really excited about for next year, which is the Candy Clark Pet Sanctuary, and that should be like mid-next year that we'll be opening, and that's kind of a rare thing for an emergency shelter to have. But thank you all for letting me chat today, and thank you for acknowledging Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you. We appreciate the work of Peace at Home, and I think Ernest, our city attorney, has some, some additional information we'd like to share with everyone.
Sure. Just to piggyback on what's been said already, I just wanted to remind, remind the council, remind our citizens, that the city attorney's office does have a full-time victim advocate in our office, and we certainly appreciate our partnership with Peace at Home and Freedom Finders and other organizations that help bring awareness to this issue. We had, in 2022, we had 374 different domestic violence charges that were brought in the City of Springdale, and we know that that represents a very small percentage of the actual domestic violence that took place. So, we do provide resources to domestic violence victims. We reach out to the victim in every domestic violence case that's reported in Springdale, try to provide them with information that they may need. Our victim advocate is bilingual and Spanish, which helps tremendously as well. So, I just wanted to make the public aware of that as well.
Thank you, Ernest. All right. Now, we'll move on to our next item, which I believe is Ernest, as it brings a resolution forward.
This is a resolution authorizing the temporary operation of a circus, and the dates and times are listed in the resolution. This is at the Parsons Stadium. They do this every year.
It's not here. Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Did you get those?
No, I did not.
You were laughing at my hilarious joke, weren't you? Brian made the.
Okay.
Motion, and Jeff, did you say?
Mike did.
Okay. Any further discussion? Or questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams, stays not here. Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Carrier 7-0.
All right, thank you. We'll move to item 11, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations by Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
The first item is a request for a conditional use permit for a Use Unit 44, which is a mobile vending in a commercial district at 2204 Turner Street. Planning Commission recommends approval of the conditional use with the following conditions: Parking and loading areas must be identified. May not operate between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Maintain onsite a minimum of three parking spaces designated for their use. If a health certificate is required, display the health certificate in a manner visible to customers. No obstruction of pedestrian or motor vehicle traffic flow. No pending upon a public way. No sound devices that produce a loud and raucous noise in violation of city ordinance or violate any other city ordinance in connection with a vending operation. Keep the vending site clean and free of paper refuse of any kind generated from the operation of their business. All trash or debris accumulating within 20 feet of any vending stand collected deposit into trash container. Submission of approved gray water disposal by Rogers Water Utilities, and submission of an approved grass disposal, grease disposal method approved by Arkansas Department of Health. And the reason for the Rogers Water Utilities there, they indicate they will be taking their gray water to a facility in Rogers, and we need their approval. The title of the resolution reads a resolution approving a conditional use for Maria Jamalith Ramirez at 2204 South Turner Street is set forth in ordinance number 4030. It is, well, there's a, there's a house on there that's recently been painted gray. They paved the driveway. It's right there. It's just south of.
Is it south of Dimes? Isn't that Dimes in the picture?
Is that where the beauty shops going in?
Yes, yes. Where they've done the work with the beauty shop, and they've set aside this location to put the food truck on.
So, which side of the beauty shop is their entrance then?
Well, the beauty shop's on the east side. If you'll see, there's some parking lot spaces in there. That's where the beauty shop. They set aside these parking spaces, and the mobile vending sits back in that location. They paved the driveway and established a location for it to be.
So, this is going to be on the area where they've already paved? Is that correct?
Yes.
Beside that house?
The mobile vending actually sits in the gravel that's there, and the parking spaces have already been paved.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Does anyone in the audience need to speak to this issue? Okay. Roll call, please.
Watson? Overton?
No.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Carrier 5-2.
The next item is a request for a conditional use for a Use Unit 14, which is a medium-density single-family affordable housing in an A1 zone located at 8736 West Gibbs Road. The Planning Commission reviewed this request, recommends approval of the conditional use with the condition that a, that the current dwelling must be removed within one year and must sign a one-year bill of assurance.
The resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience?
Patsy?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We had, did we have something come up not too long ago about runoff in this area, issues?
Well, we, we have a residential development that's adjacent to that, that's doing detention. This is just a small, a mobile home going on this lot. The detention is being handled. As a matter of fact, it's being overdesigned for the area adjacent to it.
But this isn't going to affect that?
No.
Okay.
No.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson?
Carrier 7-0.
The next item is a rezoning request for 5.62 acres located at 3645 North Hobson. The request is to rezone the property from General Commercial District C2 to Thoroughfare Commercial District C5. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance admitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from General Commercial District C2 to Thoroughfare Commercial District C5 and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Any other questions or comments in the council? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Debbie?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Move the merch clause bid up.
Second.
Now, who did that?
He did the second.
You did the second? Who did the first?
Brian.
Y'all, I'm sorry.
You're being great.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance, mercy clause, carry 7-0.
And as the usual case, these all have pending actions. That's why they have emergency clauses. The next request is to rezone 3.7 acres located at 1809 Hatchet Road. Request is to rezone the property from A1 to C2. The Planning Commission recommends approval of title of the ordinance reads an ordinance admitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from Agriculture District A1 to General Commercial District C2 and declaring an emergency.
Was there any opposition to this?
I think so. It's property just south of where the new 412 bypass is going through. And you'll see there's some other commercial development around it. Well, part of this was in Bethel Heights, and so it hadn't been extended to all of that yet, but, you know, we kind of look at the area around it. It's not too far from the interchange. The interchange is changing some of those areas down through there. Actually created some different kind of development, because they're doing access roads to them with cul-de-sacs, and we're really trying to get a handle on how all that's going to work as we move forward.
Do we have a plan for land use planning in the Bethel Heights?
We have a draft. We haven't gotten any farther than a draft yet. Planning Commission's looked at it a couple of times. I think we're, we're getting really close.
Just, kind of a long, like, question, just to remind everybody, and including me, when, you know, normally, when we annex property, it comes in as A1 unless the property owner asks for something different and requests something different. With Bethel Heights, we did that a little differently, because they already had residential zoning and different things.
We did a transition from their zoning districts to the ones in the city, and all of that translated over. A1 still stayed the same. We didn't change any of that.
Ernest, who's that go through? Just us? Do we make a, do we have to go to state or county or anything? For. For rezoning? For.
The only time would be an issue if it's adjacent to another city, and then the determination has to be that if it's incompatible, then we have to notify that adjacent city, and we always look into that. But that's not this case. This is kind of in the heart of things.
Why is part of this photographed pink?
I'm sorry?
I stood right, upper right-hand corner of this photograph.
I think they added zoning to it, didn't they, Patsy? Yeah. So, that is.
That was some that was already zoned. That's, you know, where we see, we had a request for a part of that. We just rezoned a piece up in that area. As I said, the 412 bypass going through there is.
So, most of it's going commercial?
I think you're going to see a lot of it there, right adjacent to 412 going through there, especially the closure you get to the interchange.
Where would be the nearest interchange to this?
At 265.
265.
And it does take quite a bit of property down through there to get the interchange in as it has been designed, so. And we're trying to work with those property owners that are being affected by that, and working with the highway department as we work through all that acquisition process, and they're having a lot of that appraised.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Bailey.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Do we have anybody in the audience that needs to speak to this? All right, Debbie?
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Move the merch clause bid up.
Second.
Who did the second? You did second, Randall. Who did first? I hope this doesn't affect my race this year, so. Yeah, I know. I'm balancing. I know. Okay, Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance, mercy clause, carry 7-0.
This is our practice for Planning Commission meeting this way in the same room. This is our practice for planning commission meeting this way in the same room. The next item is a request for a waiver of street improvements for Price Avenue in connection with a non-large scale and a project that is our first cluster housing under the new form-based code. They agreed to put in a sidewalk, but they are requesting a waiver of street improvements. Planning commission recommends granting this waiver of street improvements. The title of the resolution reads a resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curb, scudders, and sidewalks is set forth in ordinance number 3725 to West Pride Avenue in connection with non-large scale 2304 and non-large scale development. And you will see in our option one, sidewalks is not included in that. They agreed to put in a sidewalk. And you can see what the structures look like.
So they want, they recommended option one?
To grant, not doing street improvements, but to, they, the sidewalk is already included.
I move the resolution be adopted, option one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the waiver with option one. Any other questions or comments?
What's the basis of, of the waiver?
Well, if, if you look at these older sections of town, we go back in and putting curbs and gutters and winding the streets out, we're going to destroy part of that neighborhood. And, and I don't know that, you know, the street functions like it is pretty well. For the neighborhood, it is. They're doing the sidewalks, so we still have that connectivity. And I, we just didn't see it was necessary to go in and require curbing gutter and sidewalks for these guys. They're putting lighting on with their project, but not street lights as part of this. But they'll have lighting on their project. And we closed Petman Street, so they have that as a private access to this and their parking is off of, of that area now. It's going to be the first time we have a closer development. We've been working on this long and hard. They'll tell you like practically forever. It hasn't been forever, it's just been a while to get this stuff all together. Yeah.
We have a motion, a second. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Debbie?
Powell?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Carries seven zero.
Ernest, you're going to handle the next one, right?
Sure. Well, the next item, sorry. The next item is an appeal of the Board of Zoning Adjustments denial of a variance request located at 130 Kelly Road. This was tabled from the last city council meeting at the request of the applicant. In a nutshell, this is in, not in the city limits, but it is in the city's planning area. They requested a tandem lot split, which has been approved, and the ordinance requires that the ingress egress easement be paved, and they requested a variance for the paving and that the variance request was denied by the planning commission. As you know, the state law changed three or four years ago that allows those appeals to come to council now as opposed to going straight to court. So they have appealed the planning commission's denial of the variance request.
I move to overturn the Board of Zoning Adjustments denial of this variance request.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to overturn the denial. Which would grant the variance, right? Thank you, Ernest. Any other questions or comments?
So what does that, what is, what is the variance on that again?
It, the variance only applies to the paving requirement on the ingress, ingress easement on the, for the tandem lot split. Tandem lot split, as you know, the ordinance requires there be an access granted and it has to be paved, and they were, they're requesting that they be allowed to receive a variance on the paving. And that variance was, was denied and appealed to city council.
I think this is a situation that's been there for a long time, but because of some, I think some trust, family trust and tandem lot split, it triggered the need for a variance on this. If I'm saying that right? Is that close enough?
There's a.
Evidently not.
There's a ground road back to that property already that was scheduled.
Right, right.
There wasn't existing easement to the back and now they want to move it to a new location.
They're moving the easement?
They're moving the easement and the drive to the new location, the planning commission. Planning commission's recommendation was that new location be paved as long as it had to be moved.
There was a ground drive, that was borders, and they have to.
And they want to move it to one of the edges and that's, and it's not paved and the drive would have to be blocked, so.
What about the people to the, I'm not sure. I'm not sure of the directions, but what about the people to the south? Because it's going to be, that new drive will be bordering them. How do they feel about it? Do we know?
Well, I don't know that we had any comments of the planning commission from the adjacent property owners.
Would we have? They notified?
They get notified because there's a variance request, yes. And then their driveway has to be off of the property line enough so that their turning radius contain, is contained on that property.
But the, the location of the new road's already been, that's not what's at question tonight, right?
No, it's just whether or not it has to be paved.
It's just whether or not it has to be paved.
Right. We've already vetted all that. It's, it's in the right location, they just didn't want to have to pave the new drive. And it got tabled one month because we had some members of the trust show up and, and they had to go back and settle all that and come back and.
Can you refresh my memory on, is the planning commission serve as the board of adjustment?
Yes.
Entire planning commission?
Yes. You will notice on the planning commission agenda, there is a section that says board of adjustments because they function as a board of adjustments, yes. And has for, oh, many years.
By, by law, by statute, if you have a planning commission, it doesn't make them as serving, and as I mentioned, the statute changed, I guess it's been four years now, or was it?
It was a couple at least, if not.
Mr. Overton was wanting that to pass where variance appeals could come to city council because prior to the state law change, they had to go straight to circuit court.
So we've got a motion and a second to, for all practical purposes, approve the variance. Or is there anyone in the audience need to speak to this?
So the, the current driveway is paved.
Council Ralph Hudson, my wife is one of the beneficiaries in this trust. Her mother passed away. What we've got is about 10, just north of 10 acres that she asked to be divided in her trust between her siblings and that the sisters were to provide an easement to the son who's for 40 years lived on that back five and a half acres. It's been his mom's property and his dad's, but he's been there 40 years. The, the driveway, my father-in-law paved on his own. He just, he wasn't required to do it, nobody required him to do it. He, he paved it. He liked the way it looked. What we've done is gotten approval to have an easement moved to the south side along the south property line, but they're talking about that new section of easement needing to be paid. We're talking roughly $50,000 to do what my mother-in-law wanted to do, which was transfer a piece of property to her boy who's lived on it for 40 years. And I just, frankly, I just respectfully ask the council members to consider the fact that this is one of those do the right thing things and, and just ask that you, that you give us a good vote and, and, and grant us the, the variance so that we can move on with distributing my mother-in-law's trust.
Just let me make sure that I understood, Patsy, this is outside the city limits, but it's within the planning of area, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. And, and we've driven down that road, there's only one other property that even has a paved driveway. Everybody else has a gravel driveway. But because we moved to, to do this lot split, we fell up under the planning commission's regs and it just, it just kind of put us in the.
How did your, was it your brother-in-law you said? How did he, how was he getting back there for the last?
He would use the, the old driveway that my mother-in-law had, and father-in-law had going up to their place, and then he'd circle around the backside, go to the south side property line at that point. And, and that part of the easement's not being moved. We're just, we're just adding a little bit so he can be connected all on the south side there and have a straight route to his house. Any other, any other questions, Mayor?
Mr. Hudson? The property itself, is it level with the road or did it go up onto the property? I'm asking for gravel runoff.
Yeah, so the front four and a half to south of five acres in the split is pretty, it, it is flat on the front property line, but it goes up a hill across that four and a half acres and it drops down into Culver and then comes back up to my brother-in-law's property. So it's a, I mean, it'll be a $50,000 paving job, y'all, really.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. No other comments? Well, I'll ask Debbie for the vote.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Carries seven zero, variance is granted.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Patsy.
I said, thank, thank you, Patsy, and we're at item 12, committee of the whole. This is from, from last Wednesday evening committee meeting. Who took this at committee, you remember?
I think Jeff did. You want to do it again, Jeff?
Sure.
Okay.
Committee of the whole was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval. The title to this resolution is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for funding through the reconnecting communities pilot planning program and for other purposes.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Debbie, roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Carries seven zero.
All right, we're at item 13. Jeff, you want to continue?
Sure. Item 13 opens the, the action that was taken by the finance committee and 13A has to do with purchase of property for the extension of the Don Tyson Parkway. The, this resolution was forwarded to council with recommendation of approval, and I'll let Ernest speak to this if he needs to, but the title to this resolution is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds to acquire portions of land from Mathias Shopping Centers Incorporated for the Don Tyson Parkway project, Highway 112 to 56th Street, project number 23BPS2.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
All right, thank you. We've got a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Okay, Debbie?
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fuggerus? Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Carries seven zero.
Thank you. Item 13B has to do with purchase of property on Wagon Wheel Road for the construction of a fire department, fire station, sorry. This resolution was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval. The title to this resolution is a resolution authorizing the purchase of property located at 1520 Wagon Wheel Road, Springdale, Benton County, Arkansas.
Move the resolution pass.
All right, we've got a motion, a second to approve the resolution.
We've got two motions, no second.
Okay.
Yes, you are.
All right.
Are we ready?
Uh, we are ready.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Carries seven zero.
Thank you. Item 13C has to do with authorizing the expenditure of funds for beginning of the Christmas lighting here at city hall, the new city hall. This resolution was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval. The title to this resolution is a resolution authorizing the purchase of outdoor Christmas lighting and associated decorations for the Springdale Municipal Campus.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Any questions for Colby? We've got a motion, a second to approve.
Will that by chance cover any of the grounds across from us west of this building or just this building?
No, it'll just be this building.
Well, I, I think once we develop the park across the street, which I use the word park, it's basically going to be an open space, I think that'll be some of the future stuff we want to do more. All right? Roll call please.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Carries seven zero.
So, thank you. Item 13D has to do with a failed drainage structure on Wilkinson, and I don't think we've actually saw this resolution, but it reflects the action that we took at committee to purchase a portion of the building that the drainage structure runs under. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yes.
It's just the portion that the actual drainage structure runs under?
Yes, I'm sorry. We had, we, we talked about two options and the committee recommended the, just, just getting what we needed to actually fix the drainage.
Move the resolution pass.
Let me go ahead and read the title. The title to this resolution is a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property for a drainage project on Wilkinson Lane, Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas.
Has honor been notified, Ernest?
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Make the recommendation that the.
Are you, does your motion stand?
My motion stands, Mr. Watson's comments notwithstanding.
Second.
All right, thank you. We've got a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments from anyone?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Carrier 7-0.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Uh, item 14, Parks and Recreation Committee Chairman Mike Lawson. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. We had one item before us last week. It was a unique item that Rotary, Rotary Club has been working on for quite some time, and it is a treehouse park area next to the Rotary, Rotary Park area at Tyson Complex as it sits right now. They're asking the council for up, not to exceed 250,000. The, the whole total project is going to be two phases. It's gonna be in memory of Gerald Harp down the road, and I think have some fountains, and it's be a really nice area, really unique place. The whole project is just short of 900,000, but they are asking the council for not to exceed 250,000, and I think that's out of Park Set Aside, is that correct, Colby?
Yeah, it'll come out of the Park Set Aside Fund, you've got 356,000 in that fund now.
I'll go ahead and read the resolution. A resolution to appropriate funds to be used towards the Gerald Harp Memorial Park Project at Rantham Tyson Sport Complex.
Move the resolution to pass, and Gerald Harp did a lot for the Rotary Club and for the city of Springdale.
Let me, before we do that, there was some discussion, some of you had mentioned an amount up to 250, as you just said, the resolution reads 250,000. I think the thought was, if you do up to 250, if they raise other funds, then we would pay the last balance, it may be 250, it may be 240, whatever it may be, but a commitment, a commitment of up to 250,000. So if we do that, we'd have to amend the resolution. The motion would be to amend the resolution.
Up to 250,000, not 250. Second.
All right, are we square? Are we ready to vote? Thank you, Colby.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Watson?
Was that the whole resolution or just the amendment? Whole resolution?
I think so.
Okay, then it carries 7-0.
Uh, the last two items are, it's, it's that time again, but the first one is a resolution to levy Benton County Avalorum taxes of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and there are no changes from years past. This is something we're required to do every year.
Move the resolution to be adopted. Second.
All right, who said what? Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the resolution. Roll call, please.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman? Fuggerus?
Yes.
Did he say yours? Okay. Howell?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Carrier 7-0. And the last item is a resolution to levy Washington County Avalorum taxes of the city of Springdale, Arkansas.
Move the resolution to be adopted. Second.
Okay. Motion of second. Any other questions or comments besides that one? Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Carrier 7-0.
Let me just say real quickly, on the, those last two we passed, I appreciate everyone, our, our departments keeping up with that, Ernest and, and city, city clerk's office, and because there was, uh, there's one city in, in northwest Arkansas that a couple of years ago let this slip by, and it put them in a, put them in a bind for a while on not being able to collect their taxes. So anyway, that's a good job on everybody. It's something we kind of take for granted, but, but somebody has to stay on top of this stuff, and I appreciate our folks doing that. Any comments from city council members?
I've got one, Mayor. Last Friday, Lori Proud was awarded the Harbor Hero Award at the homecoming at Harbor, and I just wanted to congratulate her on that.
We're proud of Lori, and, and thank you, thank you for bringing that up. Do what? Absolutely. All right, uh, any other council? City attorney?
Yes, sir.
I don't have anything.
So move.
Be stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.